Mr. Paulson, when you do the reelection.
I was trying to find the part of the country that all the citizens prepare. All the political guidance and is really going in that world of civil control and other work and we're expecting to have many things in the city and the citizens of the government. All the rest now is doing with them, looking for guidance, Jesus need me for it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Are there any agendas? For the audience, if there's actually nothing on that page, you can have the IDs. I'm sorry, there's none, you can sign up here.
Hey, here's what you did.
Rhonda, do you have any question?
We had problems with the water bills not getting to people this month. The reason being is because they were in the outside box. The outside box, you can't put them in there if you don't want to go hop out. Call the boss, he talked to you on the phone. He said because we're having so much conflict, that he would let us, and this is not something they do in every office, I promise you, he would let you out, bring them in to office by 12:30. If you want them out the next day, get them to us early, we'll send each and every one of them, and that be put in the box. Because these went and caught out last week, four days in a row, I didn't get any UPS. And that's mail that comes in a two-foot tray that the machines sort it. So it takes away my time to case it, but it got sent to Melissa. Melissa, instead of bringing it to us, they sent it back to pop out, four days in a row. That's why I'm now stressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, what you say, Rhonda?
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to our new secretary. By the way, thank you, Ann, is that right? Thank you. All right. We've had a lot of question and discussion about this transfer of our CCN to Hickory Creek. I really feel that it's important for us to value the assets we have. We heard tonight that they were valued, I hadn't heard that before, so that's great. I think if we don't do that, it's like a friend of mine that lives here in the city, she has two broken faucets in her home, and she has no AC because of its, the line was cut, etc., etc. The flooring needs to be replaced. If I went to her home and told her that I would replace those things, and then I owned the house, but she still had to pay rent, or she had to pay the mortgage, that wouldn't be a wise thing to do. And I think that if we just give our assets to Hickory Creek, then we're doing much the same. So I'm glad that you mentioned that to us tonight, Greg, that those were valued. We'd love to see what those values are. On June 27th at the regular City Council meeting, Mayor, you had mentioned that if Hickory Creek got tired of fooling around with the people of LaDonia, then you would like the citizens of LaDonia to tell you how to pay the bills. Yes, you did. But it's okay. We want to work together, but that's not our job, and we really want to know how we're going to make these commitments that we have, whether we have to go with Hickory Creek or not, how are we going to do it? We're having a hard time right now. How are we going to do it if we sell? What are we going to do? So those are a few things that I think that we could do, so we could understand how we can take care of the shortfalls that we have. Thank you.
Tom, Pelosi?
Comments that I made earlier summarized here. My main concern is about, is the City Council being pushed a little bit hard on this Hickory Creek thing without being able to do your due diligence. Have you checked with the other cities that they control very well to see what their comments were? They have problems, is it a good thing for them, is it a bad thing for them? Because that could be down the road what LaDonia has to do with. I asked the question a little while ago, Hickory Creek submitted a contract, and we reviewed it, the local council had reviewed it, and all the members of the City Council reviewed that contract.
We can't hear when you're like that.
Let it through as to what is in the contract. I hope they have. I hope it didn't get to be one bite fomented. Pelosi said that you've got to approve it before you know what's in it. There could be some hidden things in there. My concern is the future labor. And that sounds like a trite thing, and we've heard that they don't want anything to do with the surface water, they just want well water. Well, they have a contract with them, and as I mentioned before, contracts can be amended. It just depends on how much money is on the table. So we got to be real careful, right? The City Council might come in, might see that LaDonia's allocated water, maintain control of LaDonia for any future options that might become available to us. If there's wording in the contract that you're looking at, that we've got, if there's wording that protects the city, one good, there's not that needs to be addressed, because it could be on the table at our disadvantage sometime in the future. My last question is, is the City Council willing to give up the rights of its largest revenue for this business of Hickory Creek? Largest revenue that you have is the water.
Everybody thinks there's lots of water, money in the water, but there's not, because I have done some research and found about half the city is not paying for water. They're skating. Half the citizens here in the city is skating on water. So my question is, what? Number one, have any council members, family of the council members, had any special consideration in regards to owed monies for the water bill? Number two, have any individuals who have received forgiveness from the city for past due water bills run up a secondary bill, and are they continuing to receive water? Three, are there individuals who have received forgiveness from the city and subsequently not paid their bills? Have they had their water shut off? I want to make sure there is consistency across the board, not for some and not for others. Four, are there individuals in the city who have received forgiveness from the city, run up a secondary bill, and receive payment plan from the city? They've got a payment plan to pay it out. Now, I have requested information, and I've received it, and I know the answers to each one of these. I think you all need to tell the people what's really going on. Thank you.
Is that me?
Sid.
Sid.
I'm sorry, I don't hear well.
We can't hear my background.
I just want to say that I think, I can't speak for everybody, because I can just say how I personally feel about some of the situations that's going on. I believe that our council kind of steered everybody in a different direction, in fact that the council is going to be deciding the factor, that's sort of how we're going to accept the different three proposals. That's what I'm interested in. Then, later on, I started digging around, and went home and started doing a little research, and that wasn't true, Steve. We're the class A general city, and general law city, and if it's going to be sold, which sounds like to me it's going to be sold, then it has to go before a special election. And the attorney told us that that would have to be applied to next, it may, it might even next year, I was going to worry. I know that's a long time off, for us to probably keep hands on anything. But that being said, I just want to say, I can only speak for myself, but I think we are being safe, and no disrespect to the citizens, and so stray on that. I can only speak for me, I just want, I want the citizens to be able to take their future to that, and not, not just a handful. I think it ought to be voted to a special election, it's not hard to do, and I know it, I know it kind of throws sand in operations, but you know, if it hurts feelings, it hurts folks' feelings. And that's just the way I feel about it, and I appreciate your support.
We're going to talk about the minutes of May 27, 2023, break room meeting.
Received it on the Monday, so.
There are no minutes of May 27, we didn't have a meeting on that day.
That's correct, we didn't have a meeting, but she got the minutes.
For May 27? Minutes of May 27?
I have given me every minute that I have.
I believe y'all meet June 27 of 2023.
I'm sorry, June, yes, you're right.
How is the name of the party?
Is he my else meet?
You didn't have a picture, I mean, I don't know.
I got one of them in the place.
I have many of these, I have two of these here, just barely.
One, and then I got my husband.
The other one probably, I don't know.
I think it's in the, I think it's in the one, if we get this one, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, I saw it, yeah.
Well, see, I found this.
Well, I want your last.
Well, I'm sorry.
Very surprised I'm dealing with those kinds of things.
I try, I try to explain things, I just take all this seriously.
I'm hanging over.
Sometimes you're a little bit more dangerous.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's all the time in prayer.
Do you have a, or?
I have a, second one.
I was bored, I was just, I was just.
Oh.
They're working on it.
Well, it's a little more, four years of that.
That's right.
Because you don't like, you just learn.
I don't think, you do in my house, I have fifty people, I don't take that.
Now, not with the towns, the favor, favor, favor.
Everybody thinks there's lots of water, money in the water, but there's not, because I have done some research and found about half the city is not paying for water. They're skating. Half the citizens here in the city is skating on water. So my question is, what? Number one, have any council members, family of the council members, had any special consideration in regards to owed monies for the water bill? Number two, have any individuals who have received forgiveness from the city for past due water bills run up a secondary bill, and are they continuing to receive water? Three, are there individuals who have received forgiveness from the city and subsequently not paid their bills? Have they had their water shut off? I want to make sure there is consistency across the board, not for some and not for others. Four, are there individuals in the city who have received forgiveness from the city, run up a secondary bill, and receive payment plan from the city? They've got a payment plan to pay it out. Now, I have requested information, and I've received it, and I know the answers to each one of these. I think you all need to tell the people what's really going on. Thank you.
Was that me?
Sid.
Sid.
I'm sorry, I don't hear well.
We can't hear my background.
I'm not hearing.
I just want to say that I think, I can't speak for everybody, because I can just say
how I personally feel about some of the situations that's going on. I believe that our council kind of steered everybody in a different direction, in fact that the council is going to be deciding the factor, that's sort of how we're going to accept the different three proposals. That's what I'm interested in. Then, later on, I started digging around, and went home and started doing a little research, and that wasn't true, Steve. We're the class A general city, and general law city, and if it's going to be sold, which sounds like to me it's going to be sold, then it has to go before a special election. And the attorney told us that that would have to be applied to next, it may, it might even next year, I was going to worry. I know that's a long time off, for us to probably keep hands on anything. But that being said, I just want, I just want to say, I can only speak for myself, but I think we are being safe, and no disrespect to the citizens, and so stray on that. I can only speak for me, I just want, I want the citizens to be able to take their future to that, and not, not just a handful. I think it ought to be voted to a special election, it's not hard to do, and I know it, I know it kind of throws sand in operations, but you know, if it hurts feelings, it hurts folks' feelings. And that's just the way I feel about it, and I appreciate your support.
We need to talk about the minutes of May 27, 2023, breaker meeting.
Received it on the Monday, so.
There are no minutes of May 27, we didn't have a meeting on that day. That's correct, we didn't have a meeting, but she got the minutes.
For May 27? Minutes of May 27?
I have given me every minute that I have.
I believe y'all meet June 27 of 2023.
I'm sorry, June, yes, you're right.
We're going to talk about the minutes of May 27, 2023, breaker meeting.
Received it on the Monday, so.
There are no minutes of May 27, we didn't have a meeting on that day.
That's correct, we didn't have a meeting, but she got the minutes.
For May 27? Minutes of May 27?
I have given me every minute that I have.
I believe y'all meet June 27 of 2023.
I'm sorry, June, yes, you're right.
We're going to talk about the minutes of May 27, 2023, breaker meeting.
Received it on the Monday, so.
There are no minutes of May 27, we didn't have a meeting on that day.
That's correct, we didn't have a meeting, but she got the minutes.
For May 27? Minutes of May 27?
I have given me every minute that I have.
I believe y'all meet June 27 of 2023.
I'm sorry, June, yes, you're right.
We're going to talk about the minutes of May 27, 2023, breaker meeting.
Received it on the Monday, so.
There are no minutes of May 27, we didn't have a meeting on that day.
That's right.
Because you don't like, you just learn.
I don't think, you do in my house, I have fifty people, I don't take that.
Now, not with the towns, the favor, favor, favor.
I'm going to size it out, you do the job.
I'm quite the same though.
I think it's going to be.
But anyway, longer than us.
Does he mind your wait, you know, the minutes of May?
What's going on there?
What's going on?
And the old business, under United Rivers, the vote, it doesn't count for you.
There is no action.
So then we don't, one, six, eight votes?
We had no action. They enjoyed it.
So it's counted out. So it shouldn't be there, so four votes should not be here. And then, um, on E, on the new business, that was five to zero, we did not have, kind of helping them. Yeah, the motion to adjourn, which I have, should be put out.
I got, I got.
Like Brad.
Oh, yeah.
She kept hitting, she kept hitting.
Say, oh, five, and vote for re- moving, and we're going to take the election. And, uh, now are we on Hickory Creek asset transfer agreement?
Yes.
Is there a discussion?
Well, we do know that we can't.
What's that?
We can't hear.
What?
We do know that we can't move forward.
Can't hear.
Okay, that, uh, the city has to have an election, or cannot, as a council, vote and approve this. This has to go through a city election ballot.
How about the rest of the people that aren't in the city, that this affects?
I would like to check on that, see if the ones that are, those would have a right to vote on that, to draw out of them, which I would hope they could.
How do we find out about this, just now? What came up? What changed?
Uh, legal advice.
Is that what the closed session was about?
No.
Legal advice from our attorney?
Our city attorney.
Okay, so what was the closed session about? Hold on, what was the closed session about? Because when y'all went back there, it was about, supposedly it was about this asset transfer, but then y'all came out and said, no action taken, now y'all are trying to take action on something else, the asset transfer, so what y'all doing?
Is that what you said when I'm waiting?
Yeah, I think Greg said it on the.
Yeah.
It was the agenda item, but, yes, it was, we did discuss the agenda item, but it was not pertaining to the actual, it was pertaining to the asset transfer, but not in what you're stating. It didn't have anything to do with the legal advice.
The Hickory Creek.
Correct.
The legal advice.
So is this new information we just found out?
Yes. I mean, I've done some research myself, and for TML Legal, and they, I have it right here. And for, uh, TML Legal, when I talked to them, they definitely said this was a sale of water, in our sale, and that they recommended going to 1502.055, which states that unless authorized by a majority vote, the qualified votes of the municipality, a municipality may not sell a utility system, park or pool.
That's what I think.
We're not selling our merge.
You're merging.
No, we have not.
You're so.
We discussed.
Asset transfer.
So, but, uh, according, a ci, we must have a city election, and that's for our own city attorney.
You have to let us know.
Yeah.
So are you going to talk to them about the other people in the county that this affects?
Yes, I think we need to do that, yes, absolutely, affects them too.
So the election would be when?
They would have to vote, and have an election first.
Well, we do know that we can't.
What's that?
We can't hear.
What?
We do know that we can't move forward.
Can't hear.
Told it, of course. Still on the
There you go.
Okay, uh, then, uh, uh, the city has to have an election. We cannot, as a council, vote and approve this. This has to go through a city election ballot.
How about the rest of the people that own in the city that this affects?
I would like to check on that, see if the ones that if those would have a right to vote on that to parlay, which I would hope they could.
How do we find out about this? Just now? What came up? What changed?
Um, legal advice.
From who? Is that what the close session was about?
No.
Legal advice from our attorney?
Our city attorney.
Okay, so what was the close session about? Hold on, what was the close session about? Because when y'all went back there, it was about, supposedly it was about this asset transfer, but then y'all came out and said, no action taken. Now y'all are trying to take action on something else. The asset transfer, so.
Is that what you're saying? When we're ready?
Yeah, I think Greg said it's on the
Yeah.
It was the agenda item, but yes, it was. We did discuss the agenda item, but it was not pertaining to the actual it was pertaining to the asset transfer, but not in what you're stating. It didn't have anything to do with the legal device.
Correct.
The legal vice.
So is this new information we just found out?
Yes. I mean, I've done some research myself and after T M L Legal and they I have it on. And for, uh, T M L Legal, when I talked to them, they definitely said this was a sale of water in our sale. Uh, and that they recommended going to, uh, one five zero two point zero five five, which states that unless authorized by a majority vote, the qualified votes of the municipality, a municipality may not sell a utility system. Park or pool.
That's what I
We're not selling our merger.
Your merger?
No, we haven't.
You're selling
because
You may have said transfer.
So, but, uh, according a ci- we must have a city election. And that's for our own city attorney.
You have to let us know.
I'm offering.
So are you going to talk to them about the other people in the county that this affects?
Yes, I think we need to do that, yes. Absolutely affects the
So the election would be when?
They would have to vote and have an election first.
Do we know?
If, if we can get it, um, you don't
No answer.
Um, actually, the lawyer said that, um, on the, that we could only go ahead and say that we were going to have the, the voters vote. And then we'd have to set a date later. But to answer this item in particular, it would be either we would have to say that we were it says the council level requires a vote on setting the election. So that's our only choice tonight is to set one or not set one. So if it passes, we will set an election date for the voters. If it doesn't, then it's dead in order. So either way, you know, the voters will decide in May of next year or sooner, I don't know how soon you can get a vote. Uh, you know, um, or then it'll be over tonight if, you know, the election stays.
So there still is a vote and then the vote says we want to put up for a vote for the public? So that's what the vote would be?
If it passes tonight with the public to vote on it, the way I understand our attorney, then we'll have an election. If it does not pass, then there's no more Hickory Creek.
Essentially, you're passing a draft as it sits, right? And then either pick a date.
No, we're not passing, no. No, we're not going to pass the the agreement and the contract is off the table completely. We can either vote, pass a, um, a motion tonight where the voters vote. And if it doesn't pass, then from what I understand, that's it. If it does pass, then the voters get to choose the option yes or no. And then it goes from there. That's the way I understood the answer to the question from the attorney.
So you're not voting on approving the contract?
Correct.
To go to a vote?
Yes, sir.
For the vote. So is that, is that something that y'all can vote on tonight based on the agenda item?
Yes, we can vote to have, because it just says Hickory Creek transfer. So agreement, we're not voting on agreement. But the way the wording is, the way the wording that he gave us, that we could, our only choice tonight was to vote to have an election. Yes or no, if we were going to have that election. But the, the motion has to state it, you know, that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
In the future, will the lawyer be able to look at the contract and work it out?
He's already looked at it.
And
The contract
You'll let us know what the contract says so we know what it's about?
Is that something y'all can vote?
Yes, it's fast and that
Can we see?
If the vote passes to have an election, it will be put in the paper, I believe, and it's got to be publicized.
Got it, okay.
So is Hickory Creek aware of this and the delay that this can put on there? Because they said it was not approved by August 1st that they were, they were gone.
I have no idea. They should have had some other here.
What's going to happen if, you know, do the fines for the sewer plant and the state takes the city over?
All I know is what the lawyer, you're telling me why I just read you.
Okay.
Maybe when the attorney does, maybe we can get him at one, a workshop, a meeting. Maybe he can clarify a little bit clearer.
Do we need to consult Hickory Creek before we put it to a vote to see if they're even want us to delay it out that far? How do we know that we're going to put something to a vote and that's something they would be open to?
They can still walk away from it, that's all right. But vote is different.
Either way, it would have had to be voted on tonight. Whether it's a vote, from what I understand, the majority of y'all would like to vote. So. And then later on down the line, if y'all decide if y'all didn't want to, we could always cancel the election. Let, you know, let's just cancel it all down. I mean, that's just the way I look at it.
That's exactly what Yeah, that's exactly what
Through our city attorney now, Hickory T O L. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the city of Ladonie have a special election for the asset transfer with Hickory Creek, as soon as possible, uh, November preferably. And we have already checked in the, we can get on the November ballot.
So you already knew about it?
About what?
It's your ear.
Read, read the, the Facebook.
I'm not going to read the Facebook. If I met you, you should have said something.
Said something about what?
You just said you already checked into it. So you already knew what we just said this without
Absolutely not. I called Tammy Bickers and asked her if we could do a special election.
That means you knew about it. That's what she's asking you. She is asking you a pointed question. And what reason did y'all go into close session? Which one of these statutes did you go into close session about? You legally have to say that before y'all walk into close session since it's not on the agenda.
Is because it has been thrown up fifty times that we need to have elections, we need to have elections. So I called her to find out if we could have an election. Just ready.
Ready. Ready to answer right then.
I make a motion that the city of Ladonie have a special election as soon as possible, preferably in November.
He's already checked.
For the purpose of the Hickory Creek asset transfer.
Yes.
I didn't hear you, ma'am. What did you say, ma'am?
Sounds like the motion carried, everybody voted fine.
And a motion of what? Have an election in November.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? For an election preferably.
How many questions are done?
If we have a second, all in say. I Great. We adjourned.